Reconvening the August 29, 2012 special meeting which is called for the purposes of conducting interviews of the finalist candidates for the Troy City manager position. For the public who might now just be joining us for this televised meeting, we completed the first interview of finalist Jim Creach this morning. The next candidate to be interviewed is Mr. Vincent Pastue. The interview is expected to take about two hours. City council members have prepared approximately thirty questions in advance of the meeting, so the candidate should be prepared to answer to each question in an average of four minutes per question. City council members will take rotating turns in asking those questions. Members of the public will not be provided with a formal opportunity to ask the candidates questions, but city council encourages the public to communicate their observations to the council members through email prior to the deliberations which are scheduled to take place tomorrow, Thursday at 3:00 PM. There is also a public comment portion of the meeting which is scheduled as the last item of business under the city council rules of procedure. Welcome, Mr. Pastue.
Thank you.
And we'll begin with Councilman Teetz.
Welcome. First question, if you can give us a brief three-minute synopsis or less of your professional background and just accomplishments.
Well, I've been with City of Farmington now about nine and a half years. Biggest accomplishment would be the changing that we've, our downtown area, particularly we've, as a result of the master plan that was implemented in 2004. We had created essentially a center park area with Riley Park. I was able to secure private funding for that park itself. Interestingly enough, it was just one of those visits, visiting my in-laws in Florida. The benefactor was down there and just made a visit prior to that and secured over a half million dollars for the construction of the park itself. Hence the name with it, Riley Park. George Riley been a great individual in the community. And then our streetscape project has changed the character of our downtown, made it much more walkable, much more pedestrian oriented. And on top of that, we have seen a significant improvement in the flow of traffic and a reduction of office, of accidents there. But it doesn't stop there. We continue. We've got a couple more projects, one program for 2013 on what's called Grove Street, kind of creating a boulevard area. The private property owners are willing to give us the land associated with that in order for this to happen. We add some additional park, on-street parking, and in 2014, looking to continue that onto Farmington Road. You know, the benefit is we've seen a big increase in our number of occupancy on Grand River as a result of the streetscape. So with Farmington, I know I'm probably pushing three minutes already, but that's really, and I think getting through these difficult times, you know, we've had a balanced budget the last two years, actually surpluses as part of our five-year survival plan that was implemented in 2010. This current fiscal year will be year three, we'll have a surplus. Year four, we'll have a surplus. And year five is going to be, you know, somewhat diffy as you get further out into it, but we've been able to maintain our service levels. We've done very purposeful reductions in our, our reduction in personnel. All employees took 5% pay cuts and benefit reductions along the way. So I look at Farmington, those are the two big ones there. In Mount Pleasant, where I was five and a half years as county administrator, numerous capital projects through their very fast-growing county at that point in time as a result of the soaring Eagle Casino. Were able to do all of those projects without adding, you know, any millage, but also, you know, incorporated the operating cost for each of these capital projects so that when we did our long-term modeling financially, we knew that we could afford it and continue to provide the level of service that we had for our residents. In Clare, multiple projects involving downtown, certainly industrial park expansion, a lot of projects that had been actually on the books or planned and talked about for decades. We were able to, to expand some water and sewer lines to different areas of the city and worked out a very agreeable financing for that. Building was two and a half years, or two years there. Very interesting place, learned a lot early in my professional career. And as I kind of alluded to last night in Fort Myers, when I was in the budget office, responsible for the utilities department, developed some financial models regarding a high-growth environment that dealt with rates, coverage requirements for your bonds, and incorporated capital improvement needs. And then, you know, the kicker in that at the end of my tenure was doing the $1 billion capital improvements budget that we had there. And just as I said, run the gamut from water and sewer plants, extensions, spring training facilities, roads, toll booths, airport, parks, libraries, the whole gamut. And so, kind of in probably a little more than three minutes, a little background with my professional experience and accomplishments.
Could I ask one question on top of that? In Mount Pleasant, you spoke of, sorry, Eagle. Was that the work that you did, was it more a partnership with public-private or was tax capture or just tax increase kind of a situation?
Most of it was, some of it we were growing from a tax-based standpoint, but also there's a, what was referred to as 2% proceeds. Some of it, some of the projects involved, the tribe, they were committed as part of their covenant or compact with the state of Michigan to operate, provide 2% of electronic gaming proceeds back to the local governments. And so, we had some projects that were involved with that to help fund it, but we also did a lot of projects where we used existing resources such as our courthouse and a day treatment facility that we had for our juveniles as well, so.
Tell us what you've done in your past jobs to ensure that council members are informed with both the pros and cons of a project so that they have the information necessary to facilitate doing their jobs?
I think certainly involvement with the council early on as to what you're thinking is really at the core. And I think establishing the reasons why, if there's a project out you, out there that you're contemplating, why it's important to the, to the community. And I think that in itself is really where you start with, with the city council and, and then from there, certainly work on the building blocks as to what do you anticipate the cost to be, what the process would be, how long it's going to take, who the, what parties would be affected by it, and what's your plan if there is some, you know, construction issues, how you mitigate that to the extent that you can. But it starts early on with, you know, what project that you're thinking. In a lot of cases, you know, as a manager, the community, council, staff already have an idea as to what projects out there, big projects. Now, certain road projects, water sewer projects, you know, that's somewhat staff-driven in some ways, you know, certainly in residential areas based on what, you know, what we see as the greatest need for some reconstruction. We do have a one-mill tax levy that we have for road replacement and using it in that context, but the same for water and sewer as well. We recently did a sewer lining project in a older part of our community. It was getting to the point where we were doing a lot of root cutting to, you know, avoid backups, and part of it is, is to mitigate, you know, our exposure from a liability standpoint. But we brought them along, looked at what other revenue alternatives, tried to apply for a grant. It was turned down from DEQ. It's almost one of those things, you have to let it fall apart before they'll fund it, but, you know, we were right at the precipice where lining this older sewer main made sense. It structurally in a lot of places will still sound, but you gotta get it before it's falling apart and collapsing. And so we brought the council along over a two-year period before we went through it and, you know, just as an example, it was probably a little over $600,000 total project that we did, but, but they understood what the need for the project was, how we were going to pay for it, and what the impact would be on neighborhoods, and ultimately what we really want to accomplish with it. In that case, it was the most cost-effective means to provide reliable sewer service going forward for those residents in that neighborhood.
Mr. Pastue, in what ways might government learn from free-market successes? Describe any methodologies adopted from the private sector that you may have applied in the public sector. What worked and what didn't work?
Well, we've got an enterprise that was interesting when I was contemplating going to Farmington, you know, not quite ten years ago, but we own a theater. And I thought, well, that's kind of interesting for a city to own a theater. And I will tell you that we struggled with it over the years. We've had a private contractor and operated. We had staff-driven for a period of time, and neither one of those had worked until recently, two years ago. Local resident was very interested in it, been very successful with some of our other activities in the community. And so we put together a contract in which he would be the general manager responsible for all facets of it, but we actually incorporated a provision in there where there will be a profit sharing. We defined what that, how that profit is going to take place, and, and so we made sure that in putting it together, we were having enough adequate room for the maintenance and the ongoing operation of the theater so that there wasn't going to be any, if you will, just neglecting of routine type of cleaning and maintenance. And so, it was very well-defined, and the first year he did a terrific job, you know, so attendance coming back up closer to profitability. And this last year, I was just looking at it as we were closing the books for our July, our June 1st, June 30th audit, you know, council was looking at what the profit sharing would be, and, you know, he's going to get $13,000 as a result of his success. Now, we get 70% of that amount. He got 30%, but it's now turned it into a far more profitable, but he runs it like a business, and that was him and his agreement in mind. You know, a lot of times when it's run by the city, well, that's a freebie, you can have that. If people start thinking that it's free, well, you know, they don't put any value to it. So we decided that if we signed the agreement with our general manager, we're going to run this like a business. We're not going to give away stuff free. I've got a little pot in the, in the, in the city budget where for community-related type projects, we can, you know, utilize some passes and those type of things, but it's essentially going to run like a business. And after two years, we're seeing, you know, the fruits of that. So in some ways, the, the success is oriented with, with that, and then also the failure, I think, is oriented when we were doing it ourselves. And to be honest with you, I'm the last guy on the planet that should be running a theater. I'm just not a movie person. And so I'm very comfortable with just about everything else municipality-wise, but, but running a theater is just not my expertise. And I think by getting it into the hands of somebody that really truly knows what they're doing, has a passion for it, you'll get far better results.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We are hoping that you can provide us with an example of a time when you believed that council may have been wrong on an issue. Tell us what the issue was, what you did, and what the end result was.
You know, I probably struggle with where I think they made a bad decision. There may be decisions that, you know, I might disagree with. We recently did something, and I'm only going to use that as, as an example, where through our planning commission and even some workshops with the council, had a discussion about something as small as chickens, having those as, you know, something that would be allowed in residential areas under, you know, very, very specific circumstances. It's becoming more and more popular in urban areas, and we went through a situation with, coming to a light that there was a homeowner that had that situation. You see what's going on in other communities like Ann Arbor, Ferndale. Situation in Ohio with animals, exotic animals that were really, so we tied this all in together that, you know, as a manager, I thought, okay, it's time to address, you know, you know, our animal ordinance and take a look at it. At the end of the day, they turned down allowing chickens in residential areas. Now, I can't say that that was necessarily a bad decision. I personally probably would have allowed it because of the restrictions that we had, you know, I thought were very reasonable to make sure that there wasn't going to be any, to minimize any potential negative consequences to adjoining property owners. The numbers were, you know, three, certainly had a setback requirement and those type of things. While I just may have disagreed with it, there was no shortage of discussion and information and dialogue with it. And so, a lot of times as a manager, I disagree with it, but you know what? I'm not the one that's elected. You know, I think that there was adequate information for them to make a decision, and that's, you know, I'm perfectly fine with that from a professional standpoint. But I don't think I, I can't think of often where I have that situation arise. Certainly on larger issues is that there has to be a good flow of information and understanding in order to make that, and as a manager, you have to respect that. If all the information is there, and that's not the desire of the council, and you may disagree with it, so be it. I can accept that. That's not a problem.
Okay, could I expand upon that just a little bit? Now, you did use the term, you said, if you have all the information that's there, what if you don't believe, let's say, the council has looked at all of the situations? Or like the example that I used previously about they want to build a merry-go-round carousel in the middle of Big Beaver, and you would like to perhaps suggest that it's not a core service that the city should be providing? Is there a methodology to express your opinions to the council that you would use?
Sure. Probably stating it in many ways like that, that, but again, trying to, what are we trying to accomplish with it? What data and information do you need? But also, from my end of it, have to, I'm very mindful and respectful that not everyone has the same viewpoint as I do. So, you know, the carousel thing would certainly have issued-
I wanted to make it clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's certain, some traffic and issues that you would have to take into account, but, but let's just say you needed to do a traffic study. Okay, here's what you, you know, you would perform that, here's what the effects of it are, here are the risks objectively is from a pedestrian standpoint, crowd control, those type of things. You know, I can't, you know, force council people to review all the data that they have, but I've also used the opportunity though for one-on-one to meet with them. If we've got a big decision sort of coming up, I do like to talk with them so that they generally understand, you know, certainly what my perspective is. We had a very, I'm not going to say, it was, it was a big decision to consolidate our dispatch function with the city of Farmington Hills. And early on, I made that, you know, sat down with them, made it abundantly clear that I am recommending that this is going to, you know, for this to take place. Here's the reasons why I think it needs to happen, here's what the service impacts are, so that everybody knew in advance that this was the position. You know, and I knew it was probably going to be a three-to-two, wasn't sure how it was going to end up, which, which way, but, but I wanted them to know this is my recommendation. And then provided a detailed report, had a big public meeting, couple hundred people there as well, with, and the focal point was my recommendation, so that you try and get as much information out there, and then ultimately the council, you know, needs to make the decision. But I, you know, I think the one-on-one helps reinforce that as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you please provide examples of actions you have taken in the past to build a cohesive team and gain the respect of department heads and direct reports? And if you could, what worked best for you, what didn't work, and if you could answer why or why not to each of those, that'd be great also.
Well, I think that, you know, over time, that you develop a certain rapport with your department heads as far as instilling what your values are, what your expectations are. Early on, it, it is going to take some time to continue to reinforce that, to make sure everybody understands. I will tell you, in a smaller town like where I'm at, it's much easier to do that on an informal basis where I can just walk over to somebody's office and, but generally through conversation, you can refer. Larger organizations, for example, when I was in Mount Pleasant, you know, I had a couple hundred employees, about twenty departments, it probably took a much more formalized, regular department head meeting to continue reinforcing, you know, what those values and expectations are. I think, you know, the budget process is always a very, very good tool for the manager to, again, look at establishing goals, expectations for the upcoming year based on the resources that are available to be committed. I think that that dialogue is vitally important. I also just think that, you know, I kind of alluded to, I think, in one of the, in the questionnaire there, that walking around is vitally important. I want folks to be comfortable talking with me, asking questions, and, and again, continually reinforcing, you know, what those values and expectations are. Now, once you get through there, you still have to monitor, and I think regular weekly, monthly, quarterly reports are vitally important, and then also monitor the progress. If you've got something that you're looking to accomplish and a date specific, there are certain critical dates that you need to monitor to make sure they're being achieved in the timeframe that you at the start deem to be reasonable. And so, you know, that's part of what, you know, I think, you know, managing those type of expectations. So hopefully I got, get direct to the question.
Process improvement and continuous improvement generally require a long-term commitment in order to institutionalize the change within an organization. Tell us how you have sustained a long-term emphasis on improvements so that they become lasting improvements?
Well, I think the, you know, in each area, every department's been affected over the last several years with the changes that we've made, and, and while there's been some of them that have been a little more challenging than others, I think that one of the nice things is that after you've, we had a number of successes early on, and though that builds a certain confidence within the organization. The first one that was really, I think, of any merit was, we did an early retirement, we had a number of individuals that, you know, were in their sixties and in their public works, and, and we had five folks retire, and we ended up only backfilling it with four. And as we went through it, the department head was commenting to me that, that, he says, I think we hired one too many. And so, there happened to be a separation with one of the employees that was remaining, and we went back and eliminated a position, but continually to restructure, you know, duties and assignments within that. And I can tell you, within the department itself, we're pretty staffed right where we need to be. We tinker with that a little bit, but I think part of it was feedback coming back from not only the department head, but the employees themselves as to what we can do to make that work. Now, we carried it forward. We did something with our pension system that we used to administer, and there's a lot of work associated with that to do a good job with it. But from my end of it, it was very time, I'm not going to say it was time-consuming for me, but it did require, you know, regular meetings and certainly time-consuming with our finance director. And for a small, small city like Farmington, there are other alternatives, and so what we ended up doing was the municipal employee retirement system. We went through the due diligence to, you know, comparing their investment performance, our investment performance, and then what kind of operational savings we can have. At the end of the day, government, I mean, pensions are not the core reason why a government is formed, and so if there's a way we can administratively handle it more effectively, we will. And we accomplished that, and it's worked very, very well. You know, retirees are fine with it, employees understand it, and they understand that it's not a core, you know, reason for your organization to exist. And so this dispatch is the next item that we have, which is, you know, significant, but again, doing your due diligence on the front end of it, you know, working out the details. We anticipate when we do the switch over at 8:00 PM or 8:00 AM on October 1st, that everything should be up and running. We're already in a transition phase with how we're backfilling some areas with some cadets and those responsibilities, so, you know, but it does build an organizational confidence that as each change takes place, that, that prior successes build confidence. My office, for example, when I started, had four people in it, and now we're down to two, and you know what? It works pretty good. Yeah, there's days where I'm pulling out my hair and, you know, wish I had more folks, but, but we find a way to prioritize, work through what we can, and sometimes you just have to roll up your sleeves and work a little bit harder, harder to get through it, so. But you know, it, it doesn't stop there. You are, you have to continually keep your eyes open as to how you can improve upon it. One of my favorite management quotes is, "The enemy of excellence is good." You always have to continue to strive to be excellent. It's just, and if you're, even if you're doing a good job, you have to be cognizant as to how you can, can work better.
Thank you. Vincent, could you give us several examples of types of negotiations you've done? Were you part of the, actually a participant in negotiations or a third party? What were some of the issues? What steps, processes did you follow to reach an agreement? Which party won, and why?
Well, I've been part of, you know, labor negotiations, and I'll just use that as, I think what you're alluding to is, you know, going back since I started in Clare twenty years ago. And part of it, I think the most important thing is, is to go into the negotiations prepared, knowing full well, you know, what the market is as it pertains to that different employment group, where you are in relationship, particularly if it's an Act 312, because it may have, it may come up at a later point in time. So I think, I've always used that as a, as a, as a start for the process, and then from there, look to what I think would be reasonable outcomes based on, you know, what other communities are paying comparable type of employees. Bring that to the city council in the form of a closed session to develop a strategy so that as a negotiation takes place and we're in those general frameworks, that there is, you know, reasonable expectation that the contract would be ratified once I, once we achieve that. And so, you know, part of that, that's really the, the most important thing is the preparation. I've only been involved in one Act 312, and I'll just tell you, sometimes, you know, I've got great respect for the bargaining teams that, that represent the unions there. They're very, they know their business, but every once in a while, they're going to find a bargaining unit that's just difficult to work with. And sometimes they run them through the process just so that they can get beat up by an arbitrator, and that's what happened in the one case. They were just being unreasonable. The facts were on our side, and we ended up getting just about everything we thought we should based on, you know, our exhibits that were provided and the testimony that went with it. But you know, there's other things that you do as you, and again, the point of it is, I don't think, is at the end of the day, you want to, I think it's important to be providing a reasonable wage and a reasonable benefit. I've always started with that, that premise. It's important to maintain and attract good, capable people, and some of that is part of what goes with it. But the most recent one was just a couple years ago. And again, part of it was a strategic, and I go back to the five-year budget piece of it, is you could see the train coming. It was coming. And so what happened was that we used to have, you know, four bargaining units, and, you know, each of them were usually three-year contracts, and so we ended up negotiating shorter durations so that we all had them come do it one time. So there wasn't going to be any whips-off effect or anything like that. And so when we knew that the train was going to arrive in the form of, you know, the worst of the financial situation, they were all at the bargaining table. So there was a strategic element to that that ties back with, with the long-term financial planning. But we had a key bargaining unit in, and they weren't going along with the 5% payment. I said, everybody's going to do it, or else we start breaking up the organization. Our leverage is our neighbors at Farmington Hills, and, you know, while I have a good rapport with them, if I'm telling them that's what's going to happen, that's what's going, what's going to happen. And so when we thought we hit impasse with them, you know, I went afterwards and just went back in there as, as we were winding it down, and I just said, now, you know what this means? I'm breaking everything up now, I don't have any choice. The resources just aren't there. In less than twenty minutes, they came back and talked a little bit further, and we ultimately reached an agreement regarding the wage cuts and the benefit cuts, and then it cascaded through the remainder of the bargaining. We had one actually, probably, I'm not sure if I should say it or not, but we actually had one bargaining unit that decertified and went with another union, and part of the reason was is that they didn't think that they were going to be reasonable trying to work through this difficult period. They knew, the employees knew what was happening years in advance, at least a couple of years. And so consequently, so when, you know, 2010 rolled around, there wasn't any surprise. It was a long and slow buy-in to that, so. Now, we try, you know, there, I don't look for winners or losers. I think, you know, all of us sometimes, in that case, you know, all of us may have been losers as employees, and even employers, because ultimately, one of the seven elements that we had in there was a modest increase in the mileage that I would recommend if they went along with it. But, but that was contingent upon everybody buying into that. So in a lot of ways, everybody took some, some medicine with it. But you do look for the win-wins, but for everybody- took some medicine with it. But you do look for the win-wins, but for everybody, so. Probably a long-winded answer.
So, managers are often faced with vexing problems that defy the traditional responses. Tell us about the time when you used a creative response to solve an administrative problem, if you give a specific example.
I will tell you that, I'm working on one right now. And we have some older shopping centers in Farmington, and one of them was purchased by a large pharmacy trying to outmaneuver their competitors who are across the street. And they purchased it for a pretty handsome sum, and went through the site plan review process, got it approved and what have you, and then decided, "Well, we're going to empty out all of the tenants in there," and got rid of them, pretty much most of them, and then decided not to do the project. Made a decision, "Well, we think we should become an income-producing center before we go forward with our proposed project." Well, it's an older center, its facade is in very poor condition, getting worse. It was always kind of a property maintenance challenge for us. We'd continue to write them up. But lo and behold, last year, it gets purchased for about 25% of what they paid for it just a few years ago. And the gentleman that purchased it, their first venture into commercial real estate, paid cash for it, thinking, "Okay, we can get some resources to, you know, mortgage this to do the facade improvements and some other things." And lo and behold, they couldn't. And so, what the arrangement that we're working on now is that, you know, they're at a point where they're willing to sign a consent agreement in which the city would make the necessary improvements based on the site plan approval that they recently got for the facade. There's a local bank, and again, all of this through our bond council, will issue special assessment bonds so that we're not paying, you know, the taxpayers aren't paying a nickel toward this project. And they're going to be special assessed over a period of seven years to make the improvements. We're still working on the details, finalizing it September 17th is the big day to make sure everything is tied up. But I would have never envisioned a situation where we'd have been playing that kind of a role to deal with, you know, a $400,000, you know, facade project. But that's what you have to do as far as a public-private partnership. I'll tell you, a week and a half ago, we're meeting with bond council and the bank that's involved with purchasing, and it's not going to, it's not tax exempt, it's a taxable bond. But we've, you know, both the bank officials and the bond council said, "Wow, this is really kind of interesting. We've never done anything like this." But it's an example administratively that, you know, where we had to do something different to take a problem out there. And that's what I actually like sometimes about the job, is that, you know, just when you can't figure out how, and there's another one, I probably won't go into detail with it, but, you know, we're out there looking at the site, walking right there, like, "How are we going to fix this?" And then all of a sudden, the light bulbs go off as to how we're going to do the financing. This was involving a project that I talked about over on Grove Street. And again, another public-private partnership arrangement. So, there is, I guess that's probably the most recent example of something, hopefully it's in the direction you were looking for.
Thank you very much.
From time to time, actions occur which damage the public's confidence in city government. Give us an example of how this has happened, and tell us how you handle it.
I will tell you, recently is the dispatch piece that I went through. And I think, you know, in some cases, if I can take some criticism for it, is that I probably didn't bring it along as quick as I could have. And one of the challenges that you have, if you've done this for a long time, you have a pretty good idea of how do you get from A to B and what are the necessary steps. And sometimes you just have to, you have to let everyone be patient enough to let everybody else come along. I'm not sure I did that in this case here, is that, at the end of the day, I don't think there's, and some of it has to deal with, you know, this issue of consolidation between Farmington and Farmington Hills, and the fear associated with that. And I will tell you, I probably downplayed it more than I should have in developing my recommendation with that. But in some ways, that, you know, I think that there were some that felt that there was a breach of faith in the city administration in my case, by pushing this when there was a good number of people that were opposed to it. But, you know, doing it for the, you know, the cost savings for it, the operational benefits, and there are operational benefits that go with it. But I think in hindsight, what I could have done is a little better job of prepping everybody that it was going to be coming. We moved it along quickly. Some of it had to deal with, you know, the timing associated with an EVIF grant. Some of it dealt with, you know, new city council coming on board fairly quickly as well. But I think, you know, generally, if you have, if you're, there's something that you express, you know, consequences for an action or inaction that you need to follow up through on that if you don't. So, but this is an item where I think I could have probably done a little better job in handling, you know, the trust of some folks until.
Thank you. Mr. Peschuk, please provide an example of a complex financial project for which you were responsible. What made it complex? What was your specific role in the process? And what was the most difficult part for you?
Well, the interesting, the one I've just mentioned is really very complex. I've never done one like that, nor has the bank or the bond council that we're working with in this case here. And it involves, you know, a private property owner, the issuance addressing a, you know, a property maintenance problem and stuff. But there's been a few where we've done some projects. I'll just use the one up in Claire as an example. This thing was on the books for ages, a couple of projects. One is extending a water main from the core of the city north to a freeway interchange. And how we did that was utilizing a combination of special assessment and revenue bonds. The city had issued a pretty good-sized debt a few years before I arrived there. And when you look at the debt schedule, you can see what the expiration is on it. And so, we structured it so that, you know, the first half, or the remaining half of the bond issue was going to be special assessments. So it is affordable by the benefiting property owners in that regard. The last portion of it was going to be financed with the existing revenue structure that we've already had committed with an existing bond issue. And we did the same thing for this one sewer project around, it's called Lake Shamrock up there. It had talked about for years, but the cost itself was problematic. And so, you know, using something like that, was able to break it down and get something that's been needed and necessary taking place. And so, you know, one of the things in putting the budget together, I always look at is, you know, particularly for financing, is how you can take what resources you'll have available, three, four, five, even longer down the road, and how those can be allocated if you have a particularly vexing project that you need to finance. And so, that's just a couple of examples where, things like that.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about your methods that you employ in strategic planning?
Well, I think that, you know, we do it every other year with the council. I still think that, at the core is the SWOT analysis, is, you know, evaluating your strengths, weaknesses, the opportunities and threats. And I think doing it somewhat, you know, on a frequent basis, you know, especially in our case, we had three new council members and different, a different perspective on certain things was, you know, vitally important when we started the calendar year. And our end of it was that we were focusing on, you know, redeveloping some of our older commercial centers, and also with, you know, establishing a long-term sustainable budget as well. But it was interesting, you know, we bring, I do think it's good to have, you know, someone facilitate that so that, you know, I'm not necessarily taking notes, part of the dialogue and the discussion. But I will tell you, for a good chunk of it, I didn't say a thing. It was simply let the council go through the process. And some of that was done in advance, and the facilitator did a wonderful job of, you know, calling out further comments and clarification with part of that SWOT analysis that went with it. And I think, you know, even in Farmington, one of the things, you know, back up even further, is, one of the things that was very helpful for me when I came in 2003, is the city had done a vision program in 1998. And that really laid the foundation for a lot of the work that took place in our downtown. And, you know, as a result of some of the things that we went through with this dispatch consolidation, and candidly, Metro Detroit is not what it was in 98. We put money in the budget this year to do a broader community visioning, using that as kind of a foundation as to, you know, what type of community we're looking forward to being, but also get some resolution to some potentially, you know, longer-term vexing problems as related to services, you know, mileage rate, infrastructure, and also with, you know, amenities. If we want to truly be a more walkable community, you're going to have to do some infrastructure improvements to complement that desire. And so, you know, with council, I've done, you know, the goal-setting sessions slash maybe strategic planning, but I always think the SWOT analysis is really the best way we're, likes to start with them.
Thank you. Please describe actions you've taken in the past to establish a sound relationship with the council, city staff, and the community. And if you could, provide one example for each of those groups.
Well, I think that, at the core of it all is communication. You know, I think, you know, with the council members, one of the best things that takes place today is email, text messages. Because one of the challenges early in my career is being on the phone all the time, trying to relay the same information. And occasionally, you would get someone that was, "Well, why, you know, why was I last to know?" And that type of thing. So a lot of that, some of those things can go out simultaneously to everyone. But communication is really at the core of it. And so, with the city council, you know, certainly providing regular updates as to, you know, what's taking place, you know, as far as city operations, what I anticipate will be coming up, those type of things. You know, it's usually maybe three, four, sometimes five pages that go along with it. Sometimes they'll slap an attachment from a department head that'll go along with it. But I think it's a good way of keeping everyone up to date. And if there's something that just happens instantaneously that council needs to, you know, certainly through email and more so now with text messages, we can get that out instantaneously. As far as the community, I think, you know, you use a number of different media that you have. Some of it is, you know, certainly using newspapers in the traditional sense, whether it's, you know, certainly press releases, maybe meeting with reporters, editorial staff. Use your utility bill for newsletters, those type of things. And then certainly, the web is a wonderful opportunity, and certainly some of the social media end of it. I wish I was more technically oriented with some of that. Maybe I don't, I don't know. But at any rate, it's, that's a means. And then I will, using your cable, I mean, you mentioned cable television as an opportunity to spread the message with the public. And then last but not least, I still, I genuinely like to get in front of a group of folks. We've done, like I mentioned, the sewer project where we were lining the sewer. We also were simultaneously doing a water main replacement and road reconstruction in that same neighborhood. We scheduled a meeting out by a church right there in their immediate neighborhood area, and, you know, probably 30, 35 people show up. And I just think it's very good to just get in front of neighborhood associations, whether it's service clubs, chambers, those type of things. I've got city manager in Farmington Hills and I are meeting with Chamber here in the 14th, I think, just to give an update what's going on. I think all those are vitally important for the community. And I do enjoy that. I just, I really like it. It's a great way, opportunity to talk about what's going on, and the feedback is always, you know, very helpful. From a department head's standpoint, I think, you know, they're always getting the updates the council gets, so they know what's going on. And certainly, you reinforce it through staff meetings as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vincent, what do you believe are the key measures of financial health of the city? And once you identify what those key measures are, how do you monitor these measurement factors, and how do you communicate them to the city council?
Well, I think that, you know, certainly my experience, you know, dealing with rating agencies is that, one, they want to know that you've got a reasonable fund equity plan, that you aren't spending at an ongoing rate more than you're taking in, taking in on a regular basis. You know, you certainly can have a variance here or there for a specific reason. But those are the factors that they're looking at. Certainly, you know, tax base, you know, how that's translating is something that rating agents will look at. Population trends, all of those are, you know, factors that that'll influence the rating that you have. How you address that is, you know, I think annually through the budget, looking, you know, again, you know, three to five years down the road with how the budget that you'd be proposing would relate to all of those factors. Some of them, you know, may, you know, such as property value changes in the marketplace, you have, you know, in some cases, very little control over. But also, knowing the fact that you have a plan. I'll be honest with you, a couple of years ago, I thought we were going to, we have a double A rating, which is very good for a town of our size, very solid. And I thought, "Okay, after 2009, we're going to get, see, maybe a double A minus or something." But they knew that we were cutting, you know, expenses. They saw the trend there. They knew that we had a plan that was conveyed to them as part of, you know, their review and call that we had with them. And so, I think that what you have to do is convey a certain sense of confidence that you do have a direction, you know, what factors are influencing your budget, and that you have a good idea as to how you're going to handle that. And that's part of what I think you also communicate to the city council. And we're, this thing with the budget that we did with our dispatch is a function of, you know, looking out, you know, amending our five-year forecast, taking in some ways a more pessimistic view. And things have changed and got a little bit better, but part of it is, "Okay, we've got to start cutting even further at this point if we're going to continue to provide the high level of service." And we always knew that this was the last item that we had out there that we probably had to do at some point in time to maintain the high level of service that we've had. But, you know, based on the forecast, that was something that we had to do.
We've probably already covered this, but we do it one more time. What experience have you had with revitalization efforts, including financial methods?
Well, there's, you know, with our downtown, there's certainly the projects that we've been involved with, with the streetscape and trying to incorporate, creating a sense of place in our downtown. It was a kind of a 1950s, early 60s urban renewal project in which a lot of the downtown was taken out and put in a shopping mall, which, you know, shopping center, I should say, which did very well, you know, up until maybe the mid, late 90s. But it doesn't create much of a sense, it's very auto-oriented, and this is primarily on the south end of our downtown. So I think trying to create the sense of place through combination of, you know, city improvements, the private donations that we have. And they've been very successful from the standpoint of creating the park. We got a terrific farmer's market every Saturday, a great summer concert series. And from a manager's standpoint, I will tell you, the best of all worlds is that a small group of young people started a swing dance group event on Thursday nights. No programming from the city DDA or the city administration. They just kind of, and it has evolved over the last few years to something that takes place on a regular basis. So, you know, it has created a certain sense of place in our downtown. But I think that each of them has their own separate challenges. You know, we've got probably four or five areas, you know, with older commercial shopping centers, each of which has a distinct challenge and probably a distinct solution. One of the things that we recently established was a policy regarding commercial rehabilitation districts. It was established in 2005, but not much happened when the economy took place. Nobody was doing a whole lot of redevelopment or building commercially at that point in time. But we have it where you can freeze an abatement for, or freeze the property tax for up to 10 years if you do some substantial redevelopment of the site. And right now, we're meeting with developers on a weekly basis. We've set up a series of luncheons, one at a time, bringing them in, going through it. And we've gotten good reviews. I mean, I use an example of an old tired shopping center that's got right now a taxable value of 2.2 million, and it continues to fall. If they were to put, you know, $10 million investment in a 14-acre site, you know, if they didn't have the incentive, their tax liability would jump to, you know, $260,000. If you take the incentive, you know, you can recut it in half. And from our standpoint, we've stopped the freefall. you know, you can recut it in half. And from our standpoint, we've stopped the freefall of, you know, this older outdated center and put us in a position long-term that it'll benefit. But for them, you know, a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars toward each year toward, you know, potential renovation, I think, you know, would be appealing. And so each one of them has different, I'll tell you, the thing I'm becoming more and more intrigued with is this case using energy program to help with alternative energy, whether it's solar, you know, geothermal, improving the, Southfield's done something pretty neat with a kind of a public-private partnership. I know Oakland County's looking at it, but I really see that as kind of a good trend. And what it does is that it allows the financing for these improvements over a period of time. So I see that as kind of a nice direction, sustainable. So, but each of them have their own set of challenges. And again, I mentioned the one shopping center where we're doing this, getting the consent agreement where they're agreeing to, you know, plead guilty of a property maintenance violation and then we'll use that as a means of special assessing them for the improvements. Every one of them has a separate need and, you know, I think a separate response is required.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is gonna be a little hard to track here, but describe a time when you found yourself, when you were focusing on details or the tactical aspects of something, you failed to see the strategic or larger picture. Describe a situation that you're in and at what point did you realize you're kind of bogged down in the details? And how did you regain focus? And what steps would you take or did you take to try to achieve that large picture, that more vision and concept?
Well, I'm struggling to come up with that moment. I'm sure it's happened, but I, I'm gonna buy some time here by just saying, I think the important thing with it is, is as you're making decisions, what are the objectives? What do you really want to accomplish? And how does that fit into, you know, what your goal as an organization will be? I, you know, and I always kind of go back to that, what are we looking to accomplish with it? Yeah, I think sometimes you can make the, get into the details too far. To be honest with you, I go back to this dispatch piece. I wish I would have handled the, at least the public communication a little bit better, knowing about that it was coming forward. Now, we had a big, you know, public meeting at that point in time, but, you know, Farmington has been a pretty placid place. You know, it's had a good respect for their council and city administration. And this was probably, certainly in my ten years, the most contentious item that we had. And some of it is, I think some of it's timing, you know, with the EVIP grant. But, you know, sometimes, you know, you get into the details of it and you think it's pretty obvious to everybody. And at the same time, then you kind of back up and say, you know, I wish I'd have done that a little better.
Okay. You spoke of the theater project at one point. Let's say you get involved with a particular theater and you're working on kinds of details, trying to work on profitability or usage and things of this sort. And that's sort of a tactical approach perhaps to a business district. Was that ever looked at as how that impacted or had some relationship to the rest of the community as a whole?
Well, the whole project itself, just to, you know, my first, I'm looking at, oh, what are you buying a theater for and trying to operate it? But understanding its historic significance in downtown Farmington as an icon and the fact that it was, you know, starting to become dilapidated with that. And so part of it is, and the challenge with that is, as we were making these changes, to make it really, you know, run like a business is, how do you still keep the flavor, if you will, of having it available for community use? And part of it is with, through the city council, I says, okay, you know, we get bombarded with a lot of different good community groups that would like some tickets, you know, as part of their fundraising effort, part of the raffle or what have you. So allow me to, you know, utilize these and to some discretion as to how we handle that. We have a Miss Farmington contest as part of our overall Founder's Week activities. Again, we are now essentially purchasing that rental time from the general fund as a broader community type of thing. So staying true to this business formula, recognizing that in this case here, that as a city, there are still some other promotional purposes, you know, that we need to. And so, you know, that's kind of an example with that. But it was purposely purchased, you know, for, as a historic preservation interest to keep that. Their performer didn't, you know, function out as they had hoped, but, you know, we've made the best of it over the years. And now it's a profitable operation. But part of it is, you know, we still set aside some money so that, you know, to address some of the historic groups that have benefited from either tickets or and/or use of the theater for a community event.
Excuse me, Mr. Pass. If council agrees, it seems like the appropriate time to take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Next question is imagine the city council is severely split on almost every issue and the situation is getting worse and you can't get anything accomplished because walking the tightrope between the factions. How would you handle this situation and why and kind of that direction?
Well, I think that, you know, even after, kind of, there was a question in the questionnaire that alluded to that, and I thought a little bit more about it afterwards. And I do think, like, in some cases, having a strategic plan where you actually may have a retreat that's maybe off-site and multiple days, you know, can really set a good tone for a council, particularly a new council, for one, to get to know each other so that you're off to a good start, you know, set some ground rules, you know, regarding, you know, certainly how everyone will treat each other and what have you. That's important for council to be functional. You know, my experience is, is big issues is really where these things come to head. But you'll also notice is, if you've been on council, there's a lot of routine stuff that comes through. And, you know, in some cases, I again think that, you know, as I mentioned, that getting an individual meeting that I have with council as to big items that are coming up, you know, certainly everybody understanding what the issues are, laying those out there. And some of them are time-sensitive. Sometimes you just have to push it along and accept the fact that you're not going to achieve the broad consensus. That would be preferred. But that, you know, that the council certainly can come to a decision on a matter, even though parties are agreeing to disagree. And that really is good. And I'll tell you, sometimes I think that personally that dissent is overplayed. I think sometimes it's actually beneficial because every idea, every alternative gets vetted. And I think that's really important sometimes. And so sometimes I think you can get into bigger problems where everybody's thinking the same. And so, you know, I do think that, you know, the relationships with council members is important, that folks can at least be disagreeing on philosophical items and policy, but still be agreeable to one another and respectful of one another as well. But, you know, some issues are just gonna, you know, because of the time-sensitive nature of it, just have to be kind of pushed along. And as a manager, you hopefully, you're smart enough to recognize the tea leaves and start fast soon enough to start formulating, you know, what you can see as a possible outcome that the broadest group would find acceptable.
Describe a time when you felt it was important for your city to change direction and thinking and personally champion the change. What did you do? Were you successful? And why or why not?
I don't know yet. This visioning thing, I think, is really vitally important. I do think we're kind of, you know, at a crossroads, you know, in Farmington. Again, I think we have a better handle on what, you know, Metro Detroit, the economy is going to look like going forward. There's a, you know, in some ways, a cultural change that you can see out there where younger people are less enthralled with, you know, auto-oriented type of living. And so I think what goes with that is to try and work, you know, through a visioning process to develop some consensus going forward as to how you're going to, you know, navigate, you know, some of these changes and whether it's economic in some cases, and in our case, very culturally as well. I mean, we're a pretty diverse community that, growing Asian population with us. And so I think all of those for those reasons. I think, you know, the vision program that we're going to be looking at starting this fall is vitally important. And at the end of the day, to reconcile the service levels that we have, you know, the funding associated with those service levels, and then any infrastructure changes that we may need to look at with that. Part of it is too, is, and I give you, you know, this kind of answer what going forward, but going backwards, the five-year forecast that we did, I mean, it was obvious, you just couldn't continue to provide services in the same manner that you had. And literally what we did, just as a means of looking going forward, is prioritizing that, if it's, what's the effect on this change going to be to residents? And so administratively, we made numerous changes that no one knew what was going on. And that was, that's the ideal. It didn't have, like I used the example of our pension system. You know, committed a lot of resources internally, but nobody on the outside knew what was going on with it. We made changes through the early retirement with our public works and, you know, brought back a few more employees, knowing that some of the work restructuring there was going to, my office going from four to two. But part of it was identifying that going forward, that through the, you know, five-year forecast, that you just can't keep doing what you're doing. We have to make, you know, fairly broad changes.
Mr. Pass, you kind of touched upon these issues, but this might give you an opportunity to expand a little bit more. What trends are emerging in American society that promise to significantly influence city management and operations in the coming decade? As city manager, how would you prepare the Troy city government to cope with these trends?
Well, I think that the trends that I see is, you know, we are going to have a much more culturally diverse community throughout southeast Michigan, not just, you know, limited to Troy, it's already taking place, but also Farmington where I'm at, Farmington Hills are adjoining area. And so, you know, you have to recognize that as a trend. As I mentioned, young people are As I mentioned, young people are less auto-oriented, I can see certainly an interest more transit-oriented. We recently threw the, oh, not SEMCOG, but Suburbs, Michigan Suburbs Alliance had this millennial mayor's gathering at Farmington City Hall that we hosted jointly with Farmington Hills and, you know, sitting in on a table with young people, twenties, early thirties, I remember looking at Farmington Hills city manager, Steve Brock, and I said, "Bike paths." That's what these folks want, bike paths. And so, you know, our infrastructure as it is now isn't structured that way and that's where I think some of the visioning, you know, end of it, you know, comes up. The other thing I think is, you know, environmental sustainability is going to be more and more significant item, you know, you know, from, and I don't use it necessarily from an environmental standpoint, but just from a business standpoint, the volatility associated with, you know, purchasing oil overseas, the cost associated with, you know, coal, although natural gas provides a good opportunity to develop a long-term sustainable plan, but the problem is financing. That's why I have some interest in this PACE program, but it's exclusively for businesses where, you know, you can make some sustainable energy improvements in the form of, you know, either solar or geothermal and finance it over a period of time. And the thing I liked about the Southfield is that one of the problems is that the banks were and financiers were, didn't like it because, you know, if you do it on a special assessment basis, they take a secondary lien position. What Southfield's doing, it's kind of interesting where they're working with banks as part of that, so that it still has the private sector financing component and you're in some ways a backdrop, if you will, but I see that as, you know, as a significantly emerging trend and not just, even if you exclude, you know, whatever, you know, anyone's thought is about, you know, global warming, just the market stability with, you know, taking place with growth in, you know, the BRIC countries, you know, Brazil, Russia, India and China are just going to put more and more market demands on, you know, limited resources and so, you know, from the city end of it, I think you have to recognize, you know, how you fit into that. I know that there's a great orientation to, with younger people to be in more densely populated areas. I can see that as a trend in Farmington, you know, we've got, you know, similar type housing stock in some areas, you know, I'll just use my house as an example, it's a 2,400 square foot colonial. You wonder, well, what's the future for that for young people, but they do have kids in the future and I do see that there may be some means of it, so, you know, you don't want to go crazy and change, you know, trace a, chase a short-term trend, but you do have to position yourself long-term, you know, with your existing housing stock and I can tell you, I don't have a ready-made answer. I wouldn't want to try and convert everything to, you know, high-density, you know, housing and then have that market change idea as well. So hopefully I hit the points you needed.
The next question that we have for you, we would like you to describe in as much detail as you feel comfortable, a sensitive issue you dealt with in correcting a subordinate. We're interested in what made it so sensitive, what factors that you considered when dealing with it? If you could describe the process that you may have used to correct the problem and what the final outcome was.
You know, I think, you know, over the years, you know, you certainly encounter regrettably the need to terminate personnel and some times we've done the motions and, you know, provided time off, but I will sometimes tell you that the one termination I didn't do, maybe one of the better personnel decisions that I made. You know, typically, an employee that was going through a very difficult time, got into a verbal argument with an employee and kicked a wastebasket that hit the employee. So part of it is, okay, under all circumstances, there's contact, it's usually just sufficient grounds for me to initiate the termination. mitigating, you know, factors, she went through a, lost a child through pregnancy, was under a lot of stress and, you know, we agreed that, you know, she's, I think, may have had a month or off without pay, but committed to going through, you know, counseling with that and it did work out, you know, a couple of years later after I left, you know, at that point, she was a mother and back to being the good employee that she had always been previously and, you know, when I was leaving, was thankful that, you know, for providing the help that was needed at that point in time, but my first impulse was, was just at the, right then and there, that's, if there's contact, it's done and even though there wasn't direct, you know, in the form of a, of a physical hand type of contact, but, you know, I just don't have any, we shouldn't have any tolerance for any kind of workplace violence or anything like that, but that's an example where, you know, I handled something very, very similar, I think was very sensitive and in some ways it worked out not only for the employee, but for the employer as well because, you know, she was a very good employee for a long, long time prior to that and returned to being a good employee afterwards.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks.
Could you tell us what your view of the role of city manager is in the organization and how you view the relationship between the city manager and city council?
Well, I think, you know, the manager, you know, has to recognize their role as in relationship with the council is that, you know, you do have a pretty strong charter with that, but the manager is, you know, responsible for operating the day-to-day affairs of the city, expected to employ good professional standards in that operation, but I think it's vitally important that, you know, certainly that the city council be, you know, all of the items that come before them be presented in a manner that's understandable, whether their contracts or and/or the significant policy changes in direction, budget, what have you, that ultimately the city council is the one that has to make those big decisions regarding, you know, policy directives, direction of the city. You know, the manager certainly has a lot of input, but not a vote in making that and I think, you know, providing information and recommendations, I think, are vitally important and also to let you know what alternatives were considered on big-ticket items and why you may or may not have selected one of those alternatives. You know, the second part of it is, is I do think that, you know, the manager plays a vital role in the community as being an ambassador for the city and that, you know, at all times, behavior's got to be appropriate and above reproach so that there isn't any, you know, negative impact brought back to, on behalf of the city with the conduct of the manager and I think that extends, you know, through the rest of the employees too, is that, you know, there is behavior that, you know, is deemed appropriate and acceptable and so I think, you know, the manager in many ways has to set that tone. Obviously, the concurrence and the support of the city council with that needs to take place.
Vincent, I think we covered this in terms of the dispatch and question number nine, you mentioned the dispatch a couple of times, but I wonder if there's something else you could talk about. The question is, do you all have to work cooperatively with adjoining governmental jurisdictions, be it a constructive partnership with another city or township or district or even a county? Have you initiated or been involved with things like that other than the dispatch we've talked about already?
Well, right now, we've got kind of a good, and the dispatch actually was a function of, you know, we meet with the city of Farmington Hills, city administration, the city councils and, excuse me, school board and superintendent on an annual basis and a few years ago, we formed a task force group looking at, you know, ways that we can work together to improve our operations collectively and the dispatch was one of those that came through the process as one of those alternatives. Run right now that we're currently working on is our information technology piece and again, we've looked at it not only from a school perspective, Farmington, Farmington Hills perspective and in some ways, we're not uncomfortable, if it doesn't work for one party, you know, we can drop that off and in our case right now, there's, with the IT piece, it makes a lot of sense for us as a small city to partner with Farmington Hills, they're a terrific city to work with, but they have the resources as, you know, we all use the same, you know, the lien information for law enforcement, Clemis, the voter registration, you know, through the state, the county access for election is information, a lot of the similar assessing information, so consequently, why should everybody be duplicating those type of things? So in our case, we are pursuing the IT function, you know, with them. But I'll give you an example where we were looking at doing some self-insurance, now this is really would be big for us, Farmington Hills is self-insured with their medical and, you know, we think, you know, as being a smaller city that we're area-rated and unfortunately, while we think we've got a good healthy population, we're incurring, you know, all of the cost for some bad behavior or lifestyles throughout Metro Detroit that are built into our Blue Cross premiums. So we were exploring it and based on it, you know, we thought we could save, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year by partnering. unfortunate thing is at the end of the day, is Farmington Hills, we'd be getting all of our high-risk folks and we, you know, without getting all of, because we changed our insurance to a Blue Care Network, but they'd be getting all the high-risk and I basically at the end of it, I said, "You know what? It makes no sense for you to do that. If I was you, I wouldn't do it." And so that's the partnership that has to take place when I recognize it's not a win for them. It would be an immediate win for us, but it puts them at a, at a much higher risk and so, you know, I think that's how you develop confidence with, you know, your partners in doing that is when they know that you're going to be reasonable in looking at that and this is one instance where it just didn't, if I was them, I wouldn't, wouldn't do it and it was comforting, I think, you know, to know that there wasn't going to be any problems. So I think that, you know, that's what you look for is really where's the win-win and if it doesn't make sense for one of the parties or all of the parties, you move on.
Thank you. Vincent, could you provide an example of what you have done in your current role to manage a city budgets in the unknown current economy? You know, what specifically have you done to ensure realistic forecasts and projections?
Well, I think the hard part of it is, is getting the realistic forecast in there is, again, some of the volatility, particularly with property tax values with that. I will tell you that one of the things that was preached over and over again in 2010 when we went through the wage cuts and through the benefits, because we basically capped all of our healthcare costs, this is the premium that we're going to pay, we also knew that the state was going to likely go to the 80/20, so we were a year ahead of it, you know, of that curve as well, but what was preached was, we needed budget certainty to try and get through this and how did we have to achieve it was by really locking in our personnel cost and we worked hard at doing that to achieve that element on the expense side of the certainty. On the other hand, you know, that we, you know, continue to monitor, you know, what type of sales are taking place, you know, you see a modest uptick in revenue sharing from the state based on increased sales and, but it's a smaller part of our overall general fund, property tax is roughly 56%. You know, we've got a phenomenal resource here in Oakland County, you know, we do need to listen to them, they've got a good handle on what's taking place as far as tracking, you know, property values and the impacts of it and I'll tell you, in some ways, you know, Bob Datto is, you know, he could see the train coming well before just about anybody and we, you know, we were listening and so consequently, I think that, you know, you employ a lot of resources of folks that you have good respect for and then, you know, as I kind of alluded to, some sensitivity analysis where you may have to make some assumptions, if it factors, you know, you know, 5% down, you know, what's the range you're working with and how do you work your way through those ranges to make sure that, you know, you continue are able to go forward with a balanced budget and still hit your objectives? You know, part of it is, and I just, with that is that we started with the premise that, you know, we were going to maintain the mileage rate, maintain a specific fund balance expenditure ratio, maintain services, maintain infrastructure, maintain their bond rate every year, that's right, right off the bat, that's what we started doing, that's our objective. And, you know, I remember, you know, our city attorney, one time I sent out, you know, January, when I typically do that, he's ready to kick back and read the packet and I, first paragraph, you know, boom, this is no longer sustainable, this is probably four years ago, I go, "What are you doing to my Christmas here?" But, but the reality of it is, is that if you start from that point, you know, you continue to monitor with that and how you can get back to that, that objective or and/or change them. So I think that you just have to keep monitoring developments, know what factors are out there that are pushing the numbers and continue on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, keep looking at those.
Okay, so I've heard some building block foundation ideas that are all tactical and sound very good, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, there are a little bit bigger picture here, can you give me three examples that you can identify in the past where you were successful for your community in improving the existing situation? Big picture things.
Big picture things. I think that, you know, I'll go to Isabella County and that's a county-wide thing, but we were having problems prior to my arrival there, certainly with space, it was affecting customer service and certainly security issues in the court, I mean, for succeeding years, they had problems with, almost every year, there was some sort of breach of security that, you know, endangered, you know, the community, some more severe than others, but, you know, one of the things that we recognized in, early in my tenure was that we needed to look at the potential for a new courthouse and again, it was very fast-growing, it was the context of growing casino and it was having a big impact on housing, a big impact on a number of employees coming into the community and we just didn't have the infrastructure to handle it with the county services that we were providing and so, you know, we embarked on a program to evaluate and again, the direction was clear, we were going to maintain a certain fund balance ratio, we're not going to engage in deficit spending from an operational standpoint and so we set a target of $6 million for the project and we hit the number to do that and all of the operating costs were close to what we anticipated, certainly didn't increase that, but the part of it was, was driven by this, the need for, you know, to improve the security, if you will, as people are coming in and I always, you know, just digress for a story, just for a moment, the meeting before that, I had gotten council to proceed with doing an RFP for, county commissioners for RFP for architect services to do a feasibility study and I'm at the Michigan Association of Counties conference, it's up in Marquette and you get, again, this is pre a lot of cell phones being out there, so I get a tap on my shoulder and, you know, someone asked me, "Your events passed to?" And I go, "Yeah." "Can you call your secretary? You've had a shooting in your courthouse." And you talk about your heart dropping into your stomach for a moment, but unfortunately the inmate being arraigned got a hold of the Baalas gun and turned it on himself, so there wasn't, but it really galvanized the need, not only from a security standpoint and so, you know, we were successful in dealing with the internal security issues that we were confronted with that. I think that, you know, in Claire, I'll just use an example there where, you know, we've had done, you know, some improvements related to our water and sewer system, this project around this lake was a problem in the sense that we knew that, you know, septic system was leaching into the lake, the water quality and by coming up with the financing mechanism that we did, it put in place or stopped with the leaching septic systems into the lake to certainly improve the water quality that, that, you know, a lot of people enjoyed on that, that lake as well. And then I guess, you know, certainly in Farmington is, you know, I think that we did a project that I was pleased with, you know, in that it sent the tone is that as far as traffic calming, but it also kind of pursued further into it with our Grand River project in which we reduced the number of accidents on a road by implementing some changes to the road geometrics and it used as a foundation to, because you, you know, the statistics bore it out, it was safer to drive there, far more comfortable and again, in those cases, you know, carried forward to the rest of the downtown, so those are three examples where, you know, I think I've been involved with something that's addressed the community issue, it's made it better.
Okay. What do you see as challenges for you in transient, transient, you're relocating to Troy?
From a physical standpoint or? Well, my intent would be to be here. I think it's important to be in the community where you're employed and it, certainly if you have a storm or some immediate need, you know, driving 40 minutes on a good day is not acceptable and so, I will tell you though, that there's, you know, with our house, it's still up- And so I will tell you, though, that there's, you know, with our house, it's still upside down a little bit, headed in the right direction and close. There's a couple of things that, you know, I'd want to do, you know, through maybe the winter to get it in better shape, to be marketed in the spring, which would be a little more timely to do that. But ultimately, you know, we'd look to come up here for those reasons. I do think you have to be part of the community. And I do think that when the storm, whenever a storm comes through, whether it's a winter storm or even, you know, thunderstorm, high winds with that, that it's good to be there and close by.
Thank you. Political considerations are an important factor when dealing with many community organizations at one time. Give us an example of a politically sensitive situation you found yourself in during the past year or so and explain how you handled it.
Could you, I'm sorry, the first part of the, yeah?
Political considerations are an important factor when dealing with many community organizations at one time. And give us an example.
Well, I think that, you know, I've had a, you know, fortunately, I've had a very good rapport with a lot of our community organizations that we have. Certainly the Chamber, we've, you know, that's been, you know, important to have with them. I can't think of, you know, initially here in the last year where I've had any specific issues, you know, with a community organization. I think that's probably what you're specifically referring to.
Yeah. Chamber is a good example and certainly other factions throughout that may have political drive.
Yeah. Okay. But Chamber is probably the most significant one that, you know, certainly with our DDA, we've, I'm not on the board, our mayor is in that case. But, you know, we have some time to time, some issues, you know, in dealing with, they operate our festival and trying to resolve some, you know, periodic issues with how those affect downtown businesses and what have you. And I know the director's always concerned with it, but there are some things that we just have to make sure from a safety standpoint and mitigate some of the negative impact that could be on downtown businesses for a community event. Got a very, very good group of volunteers that, and it almost mirrors, I think, what you did here. Last year, we formed a private nonprofit, looking ultimately to run our Governor Warner Mansion, which is kind of our historic museum. Good group of folks there. We try to provide them some support, you know, where we can, but ultimately hoping that long-term that they'll take a more active role in it. I think the one thing with it is, they, it's kind of a funny thing. I'd like them to be more engaged with that role, and they're a little more concerned with, we're not sure they'd be up to it yet. Right now, they'd like to do some fundraising for some improvements and programmings, and I think they're probably further along. So as I fumble around with some of that, that's probably the one organization out there. It is tied and somewhat affiliated with the city since we were involved, helpful in forming it. But that I'd like to push them along a little quicker to take a more involved role. They're far better and far more capable than they think with that, so.
Again, as we go through these questions, it seems that you've answered certain facets of the questions that we're asking. I'll read the question and then maybe give you the focus of what I think you might want to direct your answer to. Describe how you typically communicate with your organization, with city council, with direct reports, with citizens, and with the business community. How would you envision this communication model translating into the culture of Troy? I think the business community is the one aspect, or maybe we could get a little more of a developed answer.
Okay.
If you'd like. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, with our, Chamber is the most notable group that I would work with from a business standpoint. And as I kind of alluded to earlier, I'm actually, you know, going to be meeting with them here mid-month, giving an update as to what's going on with, you know, with the city. You know, we've been very involved. They went through some changes with them and they're coming out of it, you know, a much stronger, much more involved and dynamic Chamber. Got a terrific executive director and, but, you know, part of it is, is that I think in some ways, you know, as I've talked with her about it, is that in some ways, the Chamber plays a good role for us as a city. If there is certain things that we're doing that, you know, create problems, you know, with members that you have, it's good that it comes from the Chamber. We don't, you know, we want to work together, and I think that's important. But also, you need to be serving us by, you know, sharing with different points of concern that you may have. And so, you know, I'm always enjoying going to, you know, meet with the Chamber Board and they have these little luncheons just to provide updates like that. In the past, through other organizations, you know, we had in Michigan, is it Mount Pleasant? We had the Middle Michigan Economic Development Group, Claire. We had our local industrial development corporation. And so I was always involved with, at those type of meetings as well. And so a lot of those have been one-on-one, personal-type things. I haven't done it as much the last few years, and I probably regret it in some ways. But I used to spend a lot more time walking around the downtown area, talking with business owners and giving that since, certainly I spent more time in the office this year. I always look forward to summer, high 90 degrees was not great to be out walking around. But I do like to meet with them individually, to see how things are going and that type of thing. But, you know, for something like Troy, it probably would have to be a much more structured type of environment, you know, regular meetings. We do ribbon cuttings, great way to get out and meet people as well. And I know you guys do that as well, really terrific, actually. Far, terrific program that we were talking about yesterday during the band tour. So those type of things.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts about technology in the workplace? For example, GIS, e-government websites? I'm wondering what has been your level of usage with these tools in either your current job or your former jobs?
Well, I kind of prefaced it. I wish I was, you were asking me the question about one of my weaknesses. I wish I was more technical-oriented. It's amazing how 30 years ago, you were considered, you know, the little tech guru because you could turn on a computer. But today, it's not necessarily the case. So I do use GIS quite a bit, you know, where I'm at now and have it in the past, but mostly for, you know, looking at mapping information, in some cases, you know, extracting, you know, dimensions of parcels, taxable value, those type of things. I do that fairly regularly and some information about when certain buildings were just constructed, that type of thing. As far as, you know, eGov, we haven't got to the point where we've implemented that yet. You know, we do use some social media for communicating with residents. The one thing I like with our public safety is Nixle sends out the nice little warnings out there to, and alerts to our residents. It's been very helpful, I think, over the past. But we are looking at transitioning with it. And part of the challenge, you know, part of the reason for us wanting to, for me, to partner with Farmington Hills is, you know, having the professional experience and support that would be needed to take advantage of more and more of those tools. So you talked a little bit about eGov, GIS, what was the third one? It was?
Websites.
Oh, websites. Yeah, we just recently updated ours a couple of years ago, not quite, about a year ago, and tried to, you know, certainly make it a little more navigable than what it used to be, a little more pertinent with that. One of the tools that we're going to be implementing here, starting our September 17th meeting, is now changing our entire format so that all of the council meetings are not only on the website, you know, archived, but also the staff reports that go with it in the minutes. We're working with a company that provides that type of service so that, and then on top of that, not just limited to city council, I really'd like to do the planning commission and also the DDA as well. And so we're looking to expand in those specific areas. But part of it is, is just through the website is, you know, providing more of general information about the city and some demographics and different resources that are there and available. But we have updated, continue, it's one of those things, never stops. You've got to continue to monitor it, see where the hits are, what people are looking for, and how you can connect more with them.
Thank you. What is the one thing about Troy that most interests you?
Well, the most is I just think it's got this, you know, very family-oriented feel and orientation about it. I very much, you know, I like where I'm at in Farmington. This is very similar, larger scale. And I thought it was very interesting with touring with the candidates yesterday. All of us were talking about our families, and yet in some ways, I think that's a great connection for each of them in their interest with Farmington, with Troy. But it spills over, I think, you know, certainly part of that family orientation is it's safe, there's a lot of programmed activities that are multi-generational that gives it that feel. You've got a tremendous mix of residential, industrial, office, commercial, retail. It's, you know, but I think the family comfort, if I had to pick one factor that is striking from my personal and professional end, it's that.
Vincent, you've covered some of this again. You talked about the theater and drugstore redevelopment area and the way you handle that. But could you describe the extent of your experience with business and economic development and redevelopment? And what would you consider to be your most significant accomplishment in this area that's not already the drugstore project?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that we've done is a couple of brownfield projects on very prominent intersections in Farmington. One that's coming right off the M5 freeway, Farmington Road, Nine Mile. It involved a gas station and an industrial site side by side that certainly had the problems of leaking underground storage tanks. And our involvement by treating it as a TIF and establishing it as such is, you know, we were able to help the bank that located there utilize that as part of the remediation of the environmentally damaged soils there, the extraction that went with it. And it also just took a functionally obsolete, out-of-place industrial building and incorporated into the site plan itself. We had another at a very significant Grand River Orchard Lake, another bank that went in there where we did an industrial, or we did a brownfield redevelopment project there, taking the property there and mitigating, they used it to mitigate against some contaminated soils as part of, not nearly as significant, but again, gave a very prominent intersection and much more attractive and functional use than what previously existed.
Thank you. You're going to be disappointed, but this is the last question. Do you describe some specific steps you've taken in the past to help foster and develop relationships with union members that proved to be beneficial during contract negotiations?
Well, I think that, you know, just going through this last episode that we had is that, you know, we started this well in advance of going through the forecast and letting them know that, you know, the direction back in 2007, '08 was not sustainable based on what we were seeing and forecasting. And so each and every union, you know, we brought them in in advance and just said, look, you need to see this, it's going to affect the means by which we're going to be negotiating in the future. Their business agent was there as well. And so, you know, when the time came, there wasn't any great surprises. But I've had, you know, but I'll tell you, one of the benefits, as I alluded to, where they decertified with one group and went with another because they thought the international was not going to be, you know, based on what was taking place in other jurisdictions, going to be amenable to what, you know, what I'd be recommending. And so, you know, there's a classic example of sharing that information with them. And I think you do, over time, develop a certain rapport, a certain trust with them. You know, they've been through just about every bargaining unit, has probably had some disciplinary action with it. And I think, you know, that at the end of the day, that if they thought you were just and reasonable and even handed in the disciplinary action, you do develop a trust with them that I think is important. So when negotiations come around, they don't feel like you can't be trusted and that you're going to try and pull a fast one on them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pastue, for taking this time to interview with us. We'd like to ask if you have any questions for city council or city administration, or is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, I can't think of anything else as far as any questions. You know, I think the process has been, again, you know, echoing one of candidates last night, very expedited, certainly appreciate that taking place. But I think all of the information's been, you know, very helpful, you know, great staff that you have here. You know, it is a wonderful city. I mean, even after yesterday, I knew it, had a great reputation, I knew it, but boy, after yesterday, a great public turnout last night. I mean, it's got all the elements, well, it's what make it what it is. It is a terrific community. And so, no, I don't have any other questions other than just, you know, a statement of appreciation and thanks for this opportunity and the hospitality everybody has extended to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council will take a recess for five, no, will take a recess and then reconvene at 3:30 for the third interview, and that will be Mr. John G.
Thank you very much.